The agenda is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee for the review of the school budgets. So I will invite our Finance Committee members to come up and join us and open their meeting.
Yeah, I think there's a few of us online.
I was also gonna say. No, Mark's not here, but maybe one of...
This'll reach. This will reach.
I know, but they're gonna wanna come up and do their work.
Okay.
There's only two of us.
Fighting, no biting.
I'll just...
You know what I mean? Yeah, that way, when they come up, they can sit too. So everyone can sit together.
Wanna sit next to me?
Of course they do.
Call to order, joint meeting of the Finance Committee with a select board.
They're coming.
We have an empty chair.
March 19th.
Roll call.
And attending, Ed?
What's that?
You're attending.
I am.
And David, so we don't have a quorum.
What happened to Tony? He left?
He left.
Oh, he did?
Oh. Back in the hall.
He pecked up and left.
Is something we said?
I'm sorry?
Was it something we said?
I don't know. No, I know he was here for the marine and freshwater, cuz he's our liaison to that. So please, let's go forward with the presentation from the... Start with the... Mark with the regional school presentation.
Good evening. I'm assuming you were ready for us to start, are you? Okay, great, thank you. And Arlen is online here. She's gonna help us out shortly as soon as we get to the actual presentation component, which we're not quite ready yet for yet, Arlen. So, look at that. She's like the magic woman behind the camera. So, thank you so much for having us tonight. Really, really appreciate that. I'm just gonna tee this up a little bit, and then I just wanna introduce some folks who are also with us tonight. Gail Brier, of course. Chair Brier is the Chair of Union 54 and the Chair of Orleans Elementary School Committee. Behind her, Judith Schumacher. Judith Schumacher is the Chair of the Region School Committee. She was also for years Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, so she's very, very active in terms of our numbers, et cetera. To her left is Tom Fitzgibbons. Tom Fitzgibbons is actually the Chair this year of the Budget and Finance Committee for the region. He's also a key number guru for us. And beside Tom is Cassandra Roche, and she's one of our elementary school committee members, and we just adore her. It's just that simple. We just adore the energy that she brings and all the help and guidance she brings. So, tonight, we wanna kind of go... You'll find that we try to move this along quickly because there's a lot to get to, and so if we go too quick, don't hesitate to slow us down, or invite us back, or whatever works. So I'm gonna tee this up before Judith. Judith is gonna come up and talk to you quickly first. In the last couple of years since I've been here, and I understand, I think that Ms. Newman is kinda doing a similar thing for you right now in terms of realigning budget lines, et cetera, making sure the right things are in the right budget lines, making sure that the coding is done appropriately and all that kind of thing, and we've been doing that for the last couple of years. We're still not exactly where we wanna be, but we've made mountains of headway in that region. One of the things that we had yet to tackle, that we did tackle this year, was reclassifications. And so Judith is gonna talk to you about that in a minute. But I do wanna explain before, she comes up and explains that what we did to start the process this year is we took a look at all of our NPS budgets, and we worked on our budgets first and made sure that they were in the areas that we wanted them to be in terms of percentage increase. And it was only once we got to that final point that we brought in what we call the overlay of the reclassifications and then kind of dropped them down. But the budgets were created first without any reclassifications. The reclassification was like the last step that we took. So, we're gonna talk briefly about that, and then Chair Brier is gonna come up and talk about our central office budget and how that affected our central office budget. And then I'm going to come up, and we'll do the more formalized presentation of both the elementary and the middle and high school. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Judith Schumacher to start.
Okay, I should be able to get through this. I've done this so many times, I'm seeing these numbers in my sleep. So, there were items in what we call our region-only budget. Most of them are in our region-only budget. Just to give a brief overview, we have five, four main budgets. We have the high school budget, we have the middle school budget, we have the central office budget, which covers our administration, and we have what we call the region-only budget. Not high school, not middle school, but covers across both schools. Transportation, special ed, out-of-district special ed, what we pay for charter and choice out, those types of things. And in that budget, we had expenses in there that either weren't entirely attributable to the region, expenses that should've been shared with all five districts, or, and, we had expenses that didn't have anything to do with the region. Nobody knows when these expenses first got in there. They go back that far. So, and what we're talking about, as it turned out, is somewhat over a million dollars. So, it's significant. So in the category of doesn't have anything to do with the region, we were paying, out of the region-only budget, the benefits for the OTPT, the therapists, that are billed out to the elementary schools. Their salaries were there, but the benefits were paid entirely by the region. In addition, the pre-K staff. So, pre-K salaries in the elementary school budgets, the benefits were paid by the region. We are not a pre-K region. We are six to 12. So, these, this year, added up to about $360,000. So, that money gets moved out of the region-only budget into the elementary school budgets. So, that's why you'll see theirs go up and ours go down. But here in Orleans, you have an omnibus budget. It will balance out in the end. But now, the benefits are with the salaries. You can get a true cost of, or an idea of what the cost of the pre-K program is. Before, you didn't know, because the benefits, which add up to $280,000, were hidden. So, that's that part of... The other bucket of expenses were those that should be shared across all five districts. And these were mainly benefits of the central office staff. So again, salaries were in the central office budget, benefits were paid entirely by the region. So now, the benefits, which include health benefits for all the central office staff, retiree health benefits, pension benefits for some, will be moved into the central office budget. You'll see that budget skyrocket, because $750,000 is being moved into a very small budget, relatively small budget. So, the central office budget will go up, I'm sure Gail will tell you, by an astronomical 45%, but it's $750,000. The other thing that was moved over were salaries. There were two salaries paid for by the region, and one salary was split between the high school and the middle school for central office staff that work in the technology department. Again, why they were in these budgets, don't know, but the Department of Technology is a central office function. That's where they go. And so now, they are moved in with their colleagues. So, all in all, this was just over a million dollars. About $1.1 million that was moved. There was a lot of work went into it. Gail will tell you all the work that the central office subcommittee had to do on this. It was a long time coming, but it's finally done, and everything is where it should be. I think. Any questions?
Would you start, I guess?
We'll let you start.
Okay. Where would you like me to start? So, without having it in front of us or on the screen to see. So, my first question is about this sheet that looks like this. So, I just wanna make sure that I understand. So, in concept, based on this sheet, the budget is $37 million, and Chapter 70 is reduced, and then your minimum local contribution is a difference that's in there. I'm assuming, then, that you would take the percentage, which is our share of enrollment, and then multiply that by the minimum local contribution amount, and that would be the dollar amount. Both this year FY '26 and FY '25, those numbers do not match the percentage amounts that are there. They're off slightly, so it's a difference of $41,000 to Brewster, the positive, and then $14,000 to us, $13,949. So I just did this math today, so I know this is kind of last. So please just go back and check and make sure that your percentages, if those enrollment numbers and those calculation numbers, that's how that number is calculated, and there's not a piece I'm missing, it's slightly off. But this year and last year's...
So you're saying that the percentage, the percentage isn't calculated against the minimum local contribution? Minimum local contribution comes from the state?
Right.
And then, and then the percentage is applied to the others?
Correct. What I'm saying is it's slightly off.
Okay.
Like maybe somewhere when enrollment gets finalized, a couple of tenths of a point or a percent, it shifts, right? But that matters as it trickles down into the individual towns' assessments. So we wanna make sure that we know the right amounts when we're trying to balance our budgets. My next question is about the minimum local contribution, which is... It looks like the state's minimum local contribution increase is about a little over 2% this year, but your operational additional request, which is the amount that the towns contribute beyond the minimum local contribution, which is the sort of optional related to service, is six and a quarter. And so, that's just on expenses. So I'm just curious about that in sort of the balance of those two things when the state's number is at 2% and we're at 6%. My next question, of course, is gonna be about the revenues and the use of one-time money in order to balance this budget and the structural deficit that it's gonna create for next year, which is in two areas. One of them is, of course, almost identical to the one we talked about last year.
Could I make a suggestion? Because I think those questions would be best asked, the fine questions, after the presentation, when everybody has seen the rest of those numbers. Cuz I'm just talking about the reclassification here.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's really only two. I mean, we can be looking for them during the presentation. I mean, one of them is the same issue that we talked about this time last year.
Yep.
Last year, it was about the use of one-time funds related to the interest, related to the debt. This one is about the use of E and D at 1.75. I know you just certified at 2.35. That's the largest amount you've certified at in 10 years. And I know your projection, and I think for this year, is about 500,000. So if you use that 1.75 plus what you have in remainder, you'll only have about 1.1 next year. So between the reduction from E and D and interest next year, you're gonna have a gap of probably a million dollars in this budget before we get started. So I just, I know you've been working on all of that, so I really wanna hear those pieces because, as you can imagine, as we are rolling into a year in which we are doing an override, what I don't wanna do is be blindsided next year when we have another similar override related. So I just wanna, I know you guys have been in the weeds in here trying to straighten this all out, so I just wanna hear...
You know, I mean, I think this can be addressed as we go through the presentation, but just let me say from my view. I know you wanted us to do an override last year, and this is just me speaking, okay? You thought it was very important we'd do an override last year. That would've been a million dollars, $900,000. So, there was just a disagreement, I believe, on approach. We understand that that income that is coming from our investment, as we spend it, that that's going down, and that we're not gonna have that forever. But while we have it, we have to give it back to the taxpayers. We have, we have to have a mechanism. We can't reduce the debt. We can't apply it to the project. It only comes when we can come, in our revenue, when it comes back from E and D. If we had done a million dollars override last year, we'd be great. Our base would be up a million dollars, but the taxpayers would've paid a million dollars last year, and they'd be paying another million dollars this year. If they have, if there has to be something sometime in the future, then so be it. But my philosophy is, when we have, we don't ask for an override in a year we don't need it. Will it come sometime? Probably so. I don't know when, Kim. That's just me.
I don't think we wanted an override last year. I think what we wanted is the recognition that a budget can increase in a pace in which we know the budget is increasing, but your revenues are going to be declining because you've created a cliff. And so the thought was, can we work and find a way to sort of stagger that to maybe absorb some and look at both pieces, right? Because it's...
Well, I'll have to go back and look at the videos last year, but I don't think that we were gonna be getting another million dollars without an override in the towns. And we have four towns.
Right. But it's still going to come, is the point. Like, if it wasn't last year, and it's not this year, it's still coming next year, right?
I don't know that. It could be. Yes, it could be. Do you want it this year?
I want to look at operational additional. But, that's a different conversation.
It is. Okay. Are there any questions on the reclassification? Okay, next.
Okay. All right, so, as mentioned, my name is Gail Brier, and I'm the Chair of the Orleans Elementary School Committee. I'd like to start by expanding a little further on both what Brooke said and Judith said related to reallocation and reclassification. I served as the Central Office FY '26 Budget Subcommittee Chair. We had eight meetings this year, eight difficult, difficult meetings because of this whole idea of reallocation and reclassification. So during the budget development process, we had a lot of discussion, and a lot of review took place around line items listed in the region-only budget that were unfairly assigned, the whole cost of certain line items shared by the entire NOSET district. Now, the rationale for this, as far as I can tell, because this was the way it was back in 1999, when I started. The rationale for assigning them the region-only budget was twofold. To facilitate salary payment to staff whereby one check could be issued reflecting work throughout the district. And secondly, benefits could be based on one school entity. Otherwise, employees might not qualify for benefits based on any single district FTE percentage. So additionally, the four towns and the region don't all offer the same percentage of benefits that they pay. So this provided for some consistency. So as Judith mentioned, there were several things that were looked at that were in the region-only budget that moved into the central office budget. The two salary, technology, infrastructure, maintenance positions, because it was felt that it was shared by the entire district. County retirement assessment, Medicare and life insurance. Employer's share of central office staff health insurance. Employer's share of central office retirees' health insurance. And in addition, a technology position previously split between the middle and high school was moved into the central office budget. So to correct these changes, the Central Office Subcommittee reclassified these shared line items noted above and moved them into the central office budget, where the region and each elementary district was allocated cost based on the central office allocation formula utilizing the October 1, 2024 enrollment numbers. Additionally, the Central Office Subcommittee reclassified benefits for OTPT staff and preschool staff previously listed in the region-only budget and inserted them directly into the cost of those line items within the appropriate elementary budgets based on the same equitable formula of the average of the prior three years for allocating these expenses. So when we look at preschool, we don't base it on one year. We look at the previous, we look at the three years, and we do the average of that. Now, the central office budget, if we had not done the reallocations, came in at 5.49% increase of $115,145. Once we did the reallocation of the technology salaries, the central office staff benefits, and the retirees' central office staff benefits, we were looking at an increase of $990,771, or a 47.2% increase for the central office. So again, now that central office becomes a portion of each one of the elementary districts and the region district. The region typically picks up about, I think it's 59.2%, and the elementaries are based, I think this year, for FY '26, I think Orleans was 7.25% of the central office budget. So, Arlen, if you're out there and you could show the information demonstrating how version 4 became version 5, I would appreciate it. I wish it was a little bit bigger, but can you increase the size on that? So let me see if I can walk you through this. If you've been following the OES budget discussions, on February 10th, we left off at version 4, which showed a total budget with fringe benefits and capital at $6,288,667, reflecting a dollar increase of $241,424 and a percentage increase of 3.99%. So as Brooke had indicated, we all looked at developing our budgets before we did this overlay. Then, once we, when the Joint Committee approved the FY '26 CO budget on March 5th, version 5 was impacted by four line items. One of them was the salaries for central office, which increased version 4 to version 5 by $16,759. Other central office expenses got increased from version 4 to version 5 by $47,226. The specialized contracted services OT benefits, just the benefits portion of it, increased our version 5 by $7,129. And the preschool benefits increased our budget by $52,277, which resulted in a total FY '26 budget fringe in capital of $6,412,058, with a dollar increase of $364,815 and a percentage increase of 6.03%. The dollar increase of $123,391 from version 4 to version 5 is attributed to the four reclassification, reallocation line items in version 5. I'd like to stop here and see if there are any questions thus far. Tried to, this was, this was a very difficult thing to wrap your head around. And I was the Chair, and I really had to come up with some clear explanations so that it was clear for you as well. I think this is good work, Gail. Thank you, thank you. An overdue. Okay. My question is, what are the benefits? What were you trying to parody, like in terms of benefits for the preschool tuition? Health benefits. Right, but what about it? Like, what were the percentages? What part, how many employees is that? How many, what did you change from? I don't know that I have that with me. Do you have that? No, I don't. But Kim, if you can actually send that, and just like your first question earlier this evening.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Thank you, Mark.
Please feel free to send that specific question, and same with your earlier question and email, and we're happy to get back to you on that too, with any specifics that you're looking for. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
So those employees are covered by, what contractor those preschool employees covered by? Where do they live?
And that's part of the issue. They have been considered region employees, exactly as Gail said. They went into the region, for those of you who recall, so that there was one paycheck rather than the various paychecks throughout the districts. And so that's one of the reasons, I think, that they fell under. And I think too philosophically, although I don't wanna speak for any predecessors, but I suspect that part of it was, if the four communities are paying for it anyway, does it matter where it lives? But we're saying, it does matter where it lives, right? Because if you're DESE and you're going in to grab numbers, right? So for example, if you're trying to figure out Chapter 70, or you're the feds and you're looking at title monies or whatever, it makes... And I'm sure you see the same thing. It makes a huge difference of what's on those lines and where these people live, so to speak. And so that's why, so basically, pre-K has been living in the region, even though the region is a grade 6 to 12 region.
Right. I understand that part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The part that I'm confused by is, the OES employees now are covered by the towns'.
Yes.
Agreement. So what I'm trying to say is, pre-K employees that are then cut up or whatever, assigned to the town, that are in the same building, are under a different agreement.
They're right now still under, they're still right now within the region, invoiced out.
The benefits that you are negotiating or negotiated for them is different than the benefits that we've negotiated for the other people that are in the building, right?
Yes, in practice, yes, I would say that's true.
So, is there the potential that, because each of the towns, I mean, negotiates their own benefit packages, that we really are going to be creating an even bigger disparity in terms of people in the same building potentially getting different benefits, right?
Well, they have been all the way along. That's the whole point. And so, I see that probably, I wanna be clear, I see this as a first step in this evolution. This doesn't mean it's finished here. This means this is just housing it in the right place. I think that there's more work that has to be done after this year, for sure.
Okay, so I think we're ready to start the PowerPoint, Arlen? Arlen? Thank you. All right, so I'm gonna present the Orleans Elementary FY '26 budget, and then Judith is gonna come up and present the region. So in this first slide, the individuals listed include members of the Orleans School Committee, the NOSET Regional School Committee, the elementary principal, and the central office administrators who serve all elementary districts and the region. In developing the budget, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the Director of Finance and Operations, the Director of Student Services, the Director of Technology, and the Director of Human Resources have had extensive discussions with Principal Pender regarding bringing forth a fiscally responsible operating budget that supports our school improvement plan and our strategic plan. Next, Arlen? So our enrollment, which you see there for FY '25, is, which was done on October 1, 2024, is at 150. It's remained fairly consistent in the last three years with a slight increase recently. We're hopeful that the affordable housing opportunities of 107 Main Street, Cape Cod 5, and Governor Prince will increase our enrollment with the availability of 68 two-bedroom units and 24 three-bedroom units. Given the progress of these affordable housing projects, we should have a better idea of how these units will impact our enrollment in the not-too-distant future. It's not surprising that many schools on the Cape have seen their enrollment decline. There may be many factors contributing to this decrease. The lack of affordable housing on Cape Cod. The lack, lack of affordable housing on Cape Cod, the rising cost of living here, the lingering effects of the pandemic, and declining birth rates, just to name a few. In the FY26 budget, there are no new staffing requests. The staff at OES tends to be quite stable. Thus, the investment in professional development has a more lasting impact on our students' overall developments and academic gains. The next slide, please. So in this slide, we've provided you with an overview of selected OES populations over the past five years. 2025 is the furthest graph on the left with high needs in blue, English learners in red, low income in orange, and students with disabilities in green. I think I, when I saw this, I was quite surprised, looking at the, you know, the high needs. OES strives to meet the needs of all these populations by providing targeted services to assist them and meeting the academic standards to make effective gains from year to year. Certainly, the various recognitions by the state and federal government for OES's excellence in academic achievement attest to the fact that these services are producing the desired results. Just within the past two years, OES was recognized in 2023 by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as one of the 66 strongest performing public schools out of over 1,700 schools in the state. In 2024, by U.S. News and World Report, as one of the 2024 best elementary schools in the state of Massachusetts, making it a U.S. News Best Elementary School. And in 2025, the niche ranking site identified Orleans Elementary as number one in Barnstable County. Next slide, please.
Could I just ask a question on this?
Yes.
The percentage, or the way the ma- the math was calculated, is, is, is this saying that the high needs is 55% of the 150 students?
Yep. And that's designated by Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, correct, Brooke?
Right.
So, so if you add those all up though, you've got, you know, low income at 40%, students with disabilities at 20%, high needs at 55%.
Yeah, they don't.
They can, they can overlap.
Yeah, they can be, they can, students can qualify for two or three.
Yep. Does that help, Mef?
Yeah, it would, it would, I, I guess, what's not there is, is the, the population that does not have a label.
I don't know if the Department of Elementary Education designates that. This is taken right off their, their website. So.
Gail, a short question.
Yes.
Could you define what are high needs and why is it that Orleans has such a high percentage of high need students?
Brooke, can you answer that?
I think the comment that I would make is, to respond to that question, is that we are rate in line pretty much with the state's average, to be honest with you, and all of our NPS schools, right across the board. And so, you know, it, it's not something like you look and say, oh my gosh, that's, that's incredible number. It, it's not. It's pretty much totally in line with the Commonwealth. So it's, it's not something extraordinary by any stretch of the imagination.
And so what is the definition of high needs?
It's, it's complicated. I don't know that I could sit here and, and tell you exactly what it is. But, you know, when you take a look, I'm, I'm sorry, did you have a question? Okay, thank you. I was going to say, any, any one of us can. But, I mean, that, when you're taking a look at the high needs or the students with disabilities and such and low income, I can see, I think, Mef, to your point, a lot of these different subgroups are also linked to different grants and different monies. And I think that that's one of the reasons why they identify these particular select groups. Same with low income, right? Because in the day, back in the day when they used to do free and reduced lunch and that kind of thing. Judy, if you want to chime in, then I'll go back after.
I believe that the high needs are economically, considered economically disadvantaged. So those students that would qualify for free lunch when we didn't have free lunch.
So high needs is distinguished from low income, then?
It's, it's a combination of economically disadvantaged if they qualify for any state or federal program. And, and those on IEPs, on, on. So it's those with disabilities, right. So it's a combination together. So that's why you can get people that are going to be in, in two groups that will add.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Does that make sense?
But high needs is distinguished from, like, like low income.
That's part of it.
I'd be happy to.
You know, the autistic, you know.
It's one element of it. It's also those that are on individual education plans. So it's both.
Elaine, I'd be happy to do some, some research on it and I'll get you the answer and I'll send it to Mark as well. So you can share it with your committees.
Just a related question. If you took these, the graph and took the people that populate these, these, and counted up how many individuals there are in all of them, what percentage would that be of the, of the elementary school?
That's a great question. I have no idea. We've never done that. We've never tracked it like that. We generally track exactly as you see up here.
Can I ask one more clarifying?
It's.
Thank you. Um, Gail, having worked in the schools a long, long time ago, is it also possible to, in the district? Because I, I believe that our graph for OES would look the same anywhere in the district and anywhere on the Cape in terms of how we qualify how kids learn now that we didn't do 20 years ago.
Very different.
They're identified in that blue line because we're better and better at qualifying learning styles. And that, that's a, almost consistent, as you said, in the state, what any classroom would look like.
You'll see that when we come to our region, the region is almost identical to this.
Right.
You know, and like I said, most, right across Commonwealth, our numbers are pretty, pretty much the same types of averages.
You know, when I first came here as a principal, I was amazed. I mean, I thought, I always thought of this as a rich community. And I was, and I moved here and I was living in this community. And it was amazing to me what I discovered about the needs of kids in the school. So it's, it can be pretty deceiving.
But if it's possible to pull that same chart for our other sending elementary schools into the region, that would be a graphic lesson for us.
We, we actually have that because we're doing this at every, at every one of our meetings right now.
I think it would address Elaine's question. We're not special like this. This is a challenge across the country.
Arlen, while you're hearing us, you can probably say, grab that sheet and send it around for each of the elementary schools. Likely send it to Kim and then she can distribute it for each of our elementaries.
It's, it's critical data, actually, because if we are really trying to quantify the per pupil cost of Orleans as compared to other schools with similar or different types of student population, like that is part of it because the cost that come with the specialty groups is a lot. And that really does make a huge difference on your overall cost per pupil, right? So we really do need that data.
Any other questions on this slide? All right. Arlen, can you go to the next slide, please? So this slide talks about where every dollar goes. And as you, as you can see from this budget breakdown, personnel costs top the list at $4,017,114, which includes the staff from the central office and OES. Because keep in mind that the central office is a portion, there's a portion of the central office that's assigned to the OES budget. And at the core of quality education is the caliber and expertise of its staff. OES consistently recruits teachers of high caliber and we maintain a remarkable culture of caring and academic excellence. Transportation comes in second at $249,792. Special education tuition comes in third at $199,577, which now includes OT, PT, and pre-K benefits. The office comes in fourth at $108,174, which includes both the expenses from the central office and OES. Textbook materials and supplies come in fifth at $103,893. Utilities comes in sixth at $93,085. And lastly, lastly, repairs and maintenance comes in at $83,226 for a total operating budget of $4,854,861 without the fringe benefits from the town and capital. This budget supports our strategic plan, which focuses on the five key areas of global competencies, 21st century skills, goals, social, emotional learning, professional development, and community schools. Any questions? Yes.
How does the special education tuition and the special education stabilization fund that we have, how do they interact?
So the stabilization fund is set aside in the town, all right? And we don't access that unless we come to the select board and we have a very specific need. If we had an unexpected out-of-district placement and our budget couldn't cover it, we would, we would come to the select board, describe what was, you know, the, the amount of money that we would need. And then we would, the select board would determine with the school committee whether it would support that.
Excellent.
Now, we, I, I will tell you that in, in FY23, we entered, we put $52,000 into the sta- the special education stabilization fund. In FY24, we put in $86,000. So I believe we have $138,000 set aside for a rainy day.
Or unanticipated.
Unanticipated expenses, yep.
Yeah, okay. And we haven't had any yet.
No, we haven't had any yet. No.
We agreed that we would put more money into that till we reached the cap so that we could just keep that money there.
And we had talked about a cap of $350,000. And, you know, we try to put, you know, if we can put a little bit in every year, when that day comes, it's not going to impact the, 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 the regular education program. And we're not going to have to go to voters to get that additional money.
So right now, Gail, just to clarify for people at home or whoever that 199 figure that's sitting there now basically is covering known students, known budget needs.
Right, right. Yeah. We have no current out-of-district placements. Okay?
Is, is that roughly the, the green column?
The 20%, yeah.
So roughly 30 special education students?
But keep in mind that preschool falls under special education because it's an integrated preschool. It's a program for children who are, have been identified in early ages that would best benefit from early intervention.
So the, the column's at 20% of 150, that's 30 students.
Right. And that would be just special education from the 150.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Any other questions on that slide? Okay, the next slide. So the FY26 total budget fringe and capital overview, this slide compares FY25 to FY26 in terms of dollar changes and percentages in the following areas. The regular day is up 4.26%. Special education is up 10.6%. And the total Orleans budget is up 5.88%. Fringe benefits are up 6.87%. Capital is down 10%. And the total budget fringe and capital is $6,412,058, representing a dollar increase of $364,815 and a percentage increase of 6.03%. Aside from the special circumstances of those four reallocation, reclassification line items, the FY26 Orleans Elementary budget reflects the funding to support the excellent, excellent educational program that meets the needs of our Orleans Elementary students. It should be noted that none of our students are currently attending an out-of-district placement. And this, to your question, in the event that we have an unanticipated placement, Orleans Elementary with approval by the town has established a special education stabilization fund to create a safety net to respond to unforeseen special education needs in any given year without adversely impacting the delivery of instruction to students in other programmatic areas. This budget also reflects settled contract negotiations. We will be entering, entering our second year of a three-year contract with most unions, including the teachers, and this budget reflects a 3% increase in those salary line items. No new staffing, no new curriculum expenditures are reflected in this OES budget. The budget building process strategically looks at every line item and provides justification notations to support the dollar amount requested. I'm sure you've noticed, if you've looked at the, those justification notifications, the level of detail that Elaine Pender has included to, you know, to support what she's requesting. The school committee has endorsed it after carefully scrutinizing the request and justifications. On March 17th, this past Monday, yeah, no. I don't even know. March, yeah, this past Monday. A public hearing was held by the school committee and it was followed by a vote to approve the OES budget fringe benefits and capital plan at $6,412,058, representing a dollar increase of $364,815 and a percentage increase of 6.03%. I'm open to any questions regarding the FY budget that you might have.
Questions for the board? Mef?
Um, just to make sure I understand, the, the reclassification changes that you made, even though they sound in this hearing as if they're one-time expenses, they're really a permanent
Yes. They build a base, yeah.
For, for your budget, it's a permanent increase.
Yeah. But it's offset by the fact that the region-only budget will come in lower because those, the, those reclassifications came from the region-only budget.
We're shifting it, but it's not 100% shift because region-only, we're only paying a portion of the region. But now that it's in OES, we're paying 100%?
No, we're only paying the portion that is coming out of the, that is assigned based on the central office budget.
Okay.
All right. So I told you that the central office budget was increased by 47.2%. All right. When the central office budget is allocated, the region gets about 59.2% and Orleans needed to pick up 7.25% of that total central office budget. So on, if you look at the worksheets that were sent to you and you look on the last, I think it's the last page, you see the last two line items, the central office salaries, which is, I think, 3003, and then central office expenses. All right. That's where you saw the impact of the central office additions. In the elementary budget, you also saw in the OT, PT line because the benefits were included in there and in the preschool line because the benefits were included in that line item as well, along with the teaching salaries.
I'm just wondering if we should be including those benefit numbers as part of our overall calculations related to the benefit portions that we already pay, right? Because we, right, we have retirement and health insurance and unemployment and Medicaid already separated out for the elementary school, right? And so rather than having that portion just be sort of a lump sum that comes with those employees in, you know, from the district, I'm wondering if we can break it down, or it should be broken down and broken out of that operations number and put into the benefits portion. Because there, it truly is benefits, right? Besides the salaries, the pieces that come with it, right? So I think, I think that's a conversation for a little bit further down because I think that'll give us a better picture of how much of this is really stuff that we don't have control over and how much is. And then I just want to clarify on the, the revenue side, which I think is a district question. It's elementary.
That's not me.
Well, no, but I think this part is because under income on the district, it says elementary. Well, no, but I think this part is, because under income on the district, it says elementary assistant therapists and benefits as a reduction in, on the income side. Is this the credit for moving them to the elementary schools?
I can't answer that.
Okay. Because they're not, there's no revenue coming from those positions, right?
It's, it's partial. That went down because one of the therapists moved full-time to Brewster and is being, is taken out of the collective group.
Okay.
Because they, they, they work and go out as needed to the schools, but Brewster had enough need that they, that they took on one full-time.
Why is it listed as income?
So, I think I've got this right, but, so, the OTPT staff are paid for by the region, and then they're billed out, and the elementary schools, that's why it comes in as revenue to the region.
Okay.
Is it, in my, in my words, a little bit funky? Yes, it is. But as I think Brooke mentioned earlier, it's so that these, these people can be full-time employees of a single entity. If they were, um, if they were parsed out or went on an ad needed, on an as-needed basis to the elementary districts, they would be paid hourly. They wouldn't get benefits. And so, this is so that we can have full-time employees.
So, program funding, let's just say, comes into the district, but we're going to move the individual employees into a permanent location that's in one of the schools?
No.
So, that they don't have to move around?
No. No, I don't think that, they, they don't permanently stay in one school. The one, one did. One person moved to Brewster full-time. It is now a full-time of one of their schools. I don't know which one it is. But the others go as needed.
Okay.
And are billed out.
Can I, I, I don't know about the billing, but what I can explain is that if you have an occupational therapist that works forty percent in the, in the region, fifteen percent at OES, and the, the other percentages in other schools, basically, they would not be eligible for benefits because you have to have, you have to be fifty percent.
Right.
So, if they fall under the region, the region is the entity that covers them, but the portion that OES would pay for is the, is the fifteen percent of services that we get from the OT.
So, you're paying in to get services out? Okay. Yes. For me?
Um, I hope.
Okay. I'll put you up there.
There's a long-term trend of enrollment declining, and the numbers I have, I only go back to two thousand seventeen. What's, what's, and I think you very, I think you hit it on the head when you said the, some of the factors impacting the decline. Certainly, affordability of housing and the affordability of Orleans in general. What's your strategy for dealing with declining enrollment in the future?
Well, we, I mentioned the affordable housing, and I'm hoping that that is going to have some impact. I can tell you that I spoke to Elaine Pender yesterday, and she told me that she had two new students that signed up. That's always encouraging. But, um, I don't really, I mean, we know that there are homeschooled children, all right? We know how many there are. We know how many children opt to go to school choice, either a Catholic school. And so, you know, I think in Provincetown, they've, they've taken a look at contacting those parents and saying, you know, this is what we can offer you, would you like to revisit and see if there's, you know, this school can meet your child's needs? Sometimes it's based on their, on their religion, you know? And in, in those cases, you just have to respect the fact that those people will not come to the school. So, we, we do want to take a look at everything, you know, as we enter this new era of affordable housing being available in Orleans, and hopefully be able to attract more students. You know, I, I think this is a good opportunity for me, you know, to just talk a little bit about the fact that, um, you know, school choice always comes up, all right? And so, I'm just going to talk a little bit about this because I'm prepared to talk about this. Districts need to make a yearly decision regarding school choice by June first of the upcoming school year. Every year, the school committee reviews the pros and cons of participating in school choice. The statute requires a random selection process and may not establish a preference for children of neighboring school districts or municipal employees when admitting students through school choice. Now, I know that that is something that would be wonderful if that could happen for our municipal employees, but the fact is that it's a lottery, and we can't control that. Participating schools must establish a sibling preference policy when admitting students, but it may specify, it may specify into which grades it will admit students. Once students have been accepted, they have the right to continue attending school in the receiving district. So, given the uncertainty of Orleans affordable housing opportunities, we don't have a clear idea of how enrollment at OES will be impacted. If OES decided to participate in school choice, it would likely have a ripple effect on our other elementary school districts in Nauset. And, you know, I'm not sure that we want to cannibalize our own union, and we can't say that we're just going to open it up to our union districts. It has to be, you know, totally open.
I agree that recruitment probably is the, your most effective way of finding students. Of course, I don't think it should be mandated for those who opt to go homeschool or choice out or go to parochial schools, but it's, it's quite a marketing challenge, especially at the, at the Orleans, at the elementary school level, to, to be able to recruit students.
Mm-hmm.
I think you have a real difficult challenge ahead.
Oh, I, I, I agree with you.
Putting, putting some eggs in a affordable housing basket is a, is a, is a risk.
It is a risk, but at this point, you know, it's, we're there, we're on the cusp of this, and we'd like to, like to see what, what this brings forth.
Yeah, because without adjustment for special needs and those bars that you showed, it's, uh, our, our Orleans kids, our elementary school kids, I think, is paying, are paying like forty-two thousand seven hundred dollars a year, or costing per student, forty-two thousand bucks a year.
So, I know that you figure this by looking at the number of students.
One fifty divided by the six point four.
Right. But I, I will tell you that the state does it a little, you know.
I'm, I'm not doing it for comparative purposes. I'm doing it for.
Yeah.
Very selfish purposes from Orleans. I'm taking what our budget is, dividing by the number of students. I'm not saying we're better, cheaper, more expensive than any place else.
And, and I can't argue with the fact that it's a high cost, but I will tell you that our ki, our school is, is recognized, our kids are successful, and it's because we put in the money with, you know, the interventions and the services that help these kids be successful. And I realize, I'm a citizen of this town.
I think the rewards you've earned and truly earned are spectacular. I, I'm just saying, we got to, I think we got to plan for the future, and that future may have fewer than a hundred and fifty students sitting there. That's all. I think we got to be prepared.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question while we're on this? If, I'm assuming that the DESI's site in their radar is the system that we can use in order to really see what the calculations are related to enrollment and costs, right? Even if it's a couple of years old?
It's a couple of years old, yes.
Right. So, all I would say is, I'm sure Ed and I have a very simple, I would love to see you be more aggressive about getting students, and you know this already, in any which way that you could do it, but Orleans is third highest or fourth highest in the region in terms of cost, related per pupil cost for elementary school, and that's just a fact, right? The district is also very high, but like, the elementary school is very high, and it's hard for us to avoid that conversation every time somebody wants to talk about the school. So, just saying, if we want to use data and people want to know where it's from, they can go right to the DESI site and see it. They don't need to do a side calculation. We want everyone to be working from the same exact information so that we can make good decisions, so.
I mean, I can tell you that on, on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the FY twenty-three per pupil cost for Orleans was thirty-nine thousand seventy dollars and fifty-six cents, or fifty-five cents. So, I'm not unaware of it.
Oh, I, I'm.
Yeah, I, I just.
Oh, please don't, I'm not.
No, no.
Accusing you of that.
No, no.
I'm just simply saying, the, the facts are, in front of us are that we've got to do something, or it's going to become extremely, extremely expensive, and I think it will become a big deal.
Yes. Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you. I don't.
Please don't, I.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Mine was not a criticism, it was just simply trying to say, let's think into the future and be strategic.
Yeah.
About what's facing us.
If, if you have any thoughts, I mean, please send them my way.
I will.
Because I would be looking for opportunities to, um, to address this.
Okay.
Without cannibalizing.
You know our thoughts. You know the, the word, you already said it, you already talked about it earlier. We, like, but, we, we're not, we're not there, so we don't have to have a hypothetical conversation, but we, I mean, an article came out about Provincetown and their ability to sort of be creative and aggressive about their recruitment, and we do have an award mailing elementary school that we could share with more people. So, if we could get more people into that school, you know, that's not what you want to do at this moment, but that would certainly help us all in, for multiple reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Elaine, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to reinforce what Ed is saying. You have a terrific product in the Orleans Elementary School. I mean, we are enormously proud of what you and we as a community have done there, and by bringing in a few more students, you bring down your cost per student.
Absolutely.
And share the expertise that you have with a much broader community. So, maybe if you don't want to cannibalize your own district, you, you eliminate and say nobody from, you know, Brewster, Welfley, Eastham. And, and go further out. If you've got some of those, you know, Chinese tiger mothers, you'll get people from Plymouth or Falmouth that'll say, I want to take my child to the best possible school.
But Elaine, you can't.
I would say, in the future, but then I kind of want to back up.
You can't, you can't do that. You can't, if you, if you have school choice, you, it's just school choice.
Got it.
All right? So, it, it's really a balance of, you know, of, of what we're going to do. It's, it's a very difficult decision.
Yeah, and then I wanted to back up on something that you said before this conversation, which had to do, you said that the staff had negotiated, you were in the middle of a three-year contract, and there's a three percent increase.
Yes.
And you also said that the number of people had remained the same. The number of staff had remained the same. So, if we have a three percent increase, no increase, three percent increase in the salaries, and there's been no increase in staff, how come the increase isn't closer to the three percent rather than the four point two six?
I'll take that one. That's us. So, because their benefits and their retirement is tied to the town, their, so their majority of their increase in their over, so their budget increased, what?
They've got the fringe benefits there.
Six point eight seven. Yeah, but still, I mean, their whole budget increased three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, right? Hundred thousand dollars of that is benefit and retirement costs related to their employees that we carry in the other lines. Their, their budget operations increase, even with the reclassifications, is like two seventy. So, that's, you know.
Elaine, you also have people that are on the contract that are on step increases on top of a cost of living increase.
Good point, thank you.
Right.
That's a good point, right.
And we also encourage our, our staff members, and I mean, you know, one of the things that, that has always been part of the negotiated contract settlements for salaries of our teachers down here in the Lower Cape is, you get a kid comes out of college with a bachelor's degree, and they've got five years to get their masters and get their license done, and so, where are you going to go to graduate school if you live in Orleans? You're going to drive over the bridge.
Out of Bridgewater.
And, and so, you know, there needs to be an incentivization of, of, of that increased educational component for our, for our staff, for our teachers.
Thank you.
You've got to get their masters degree, and you know, so that all kind of figures into that, that salary.
Thank you.
As well. Just, you know, Gail, one of the things I, I had two questions for you, actually one question, but I wanted to make one comment. And, you know, I hear this from other people in town as, as well about the affordable housing aspect of, of what the town is doing, specifically Orleans, because we're not taking kids from other towns, we don't have school choice at the elementary level. So, when you look at the affordable housing projects in Orleans, we've got the West Road Complex coming online probably this late spring, early summer, predominantly one-bedroom housing. Low-income, thirty, sixty, eighty percent AMI, a few two-bedrooms and a couple of three-bedrooms. We've got one oh seven Main Street down here that's got one three-bedroom unit and a few two-bedrooms, and the rest are all single-bedroom. And I think what we would look at is those new housing opportunities for people would probably go to people that are already here, that are struggling to stay here, that if they don't get into one of those complexes, they're going to move off Cape. So, it's not like we're going to get an influx of new people, new families with children coming into those units that we have online in Orleans right now. If we can develop a market rate rental program here in Orleans where we encourage the private sector to build more housing, that's, it's workforce housing, whatever term you want to use, the missing middle housing, young families may be able to afford to come here, not just scrape by to stay here, the ones that are already here, but new young families can come here if we can do that with our housing stock. But I think it's kind of overly hopeful to think that when people start moving into the affordable housing units that we have online right now, it's going to impact our elementary schools.
So, the way you're looking at it is that people in Orleans are going to be the ones filling these affordable housing units. And I, I think of it beyond, a little beyond Orleans, that someone from Harwich, for example, may fill that affordable housing. And they, and they could have children, and wouldn't they, why wouldn't they want to send their children to Orleans Elementary?
No, I understand, and all this is hypothetical, but I just think that in terms of the numbers that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
They're relatively small compared to, you know, the numbers that we would like to see within school.
Well, let's hope, let's hope you're wrong.
So, one of the things I would like us to reframe our thinking about is demographics. We are still one of the oldest communities in the state. I think Chatham, we share that rivalry. So, we're not going to, I mean, we have to lower who lives here at that age, and unless we look at jobs that are year-round, not seasonal economy jobs, we will also continue to pay that line in the budget that you saw of income challenge. I had the same shock you did, Gail, when I came here from the Midwest. The poverty that exists, the real poverty in our year-round community is the untold story to our guest seasonal community. And so, if we want to change those graphs, we have to build the jobs, and we have to build the housing, and we have to impact that number from mid-sixties back down towards where it is for the state. And it's not a, it's not an easy process. The Affordable Housing Trust yesterday was talking about the really singling out workforce and family structures because the, most of the new housing is one and two bedrooms. That won't accommodate the kind of change we need for our community. The school is a reflection of who we are. The school alone cannot solve this problem. It's us, all of us.
You know, I think I, I was listening to a meeting, I think it might have been economic development, and the question that somebody posed was, do we want to be a town for tourists and for seniors, or do we want to be a town for young families?
That's right.
And I think it's a mindset that we have to embrace, that if we don't have young families here, we, we are not going to have the workforce that we need, and we're, it's, it's.
I don't think you'll find anyone that disagrees with you.
No, I know, I know. But I just thought I would mention that. No, I know. I know. But I just thought I would mention that because I thought that was a very interesting observation, you know.
I do have one specific question on the budget for you though, and we alluded to it earlier when we were talking about the special needs.
Stabilization fund?
Stabilization fund. I was looking and I couldn't find it, but I might've missed it. Are we putting more money into that this year?
We wait till the end, we, we decide that at the end of the year.
Okay, so you're going to wait until the end of the year and see. So we could include that if there's budget surplus.
Right. And, and we would, we would discuss it with Kim.
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't sure if you had budgeted anything.
No, no, that doesn't come until the end of the year.
Thank you.
So, thank you. That's it for me.
Any other questions from the board? Elaine, any of your people?
Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, congratulations for what you've done with Orleans Elementary Schools. You topped elementary schools.
We're very proud of that.
With the population we have.
Thank you for your work.
So I'm going to continue on with the slide deck here. So Arlen, thank you. To the next page, please. So a lot of what Gail has said is, is just, I almost want to go ditto to everything because you're going to see basically the same types of slides now. I'll just touch base on this and I'll defer to both Judy and Tom to fill in any holes that I leave behind. When we take a look at our FY 2026 preview and some of the things that were, were drivers for our budget in some ways, we've got new administration coming into place for the new school year. The NRHS campus renovation is going to be complete. We have implementation of brand-new software, financial software that's coming into play for the business office. I think our current software is about 30 years old, so we think it's more than time that we're, that we're making this shift, but it's not an easy shift. The, we've got some increased energy savings, but we also have some increased expenses in the new, new building as a result of the level of green that it is right at this point in time is a little bit more expensive. We have established, as Gail had talked about earlier, and Special Education Stabilization Fund in all of our elementary schools. By the end of this year, all of our elementary schools will have these in place. And the region is looking at establishing one as well. Not looking at putting any money into it right now. We're just asking to be able to establish it. Each of our NPS schools though have got these funds in place now and are at different places in it. And I just want to go back to one of the questions that you were asking earlier about the stabilization fund, for example, in Brewster. We, I think the first year there, we put in $100,000 and in the first year, we had to go back for $73,000 of that money. And so we went back and revisited that with the Board of Selectmen at that point in time. And even though we had to take out of that money, we immediately put it back in within the next year. So the, the whole notion is as soon as we have the monies to put back in, that, that's what we're looking at doing. There's a Transportation Capital Reserve Fund. Judy would be outstanding to talk to that a little bit in a little bit more detail if you have any interest in that. And basically, the long story short on that is that our bus leases are up right now. And so we're continuing to fund it at the same level, but we're putting it into a capital reserve, kind of like a stabilization fund. Because at some point in time, you're going to have to buy buses again and lease buses again. And so this is just kind of being conservative in terms of putting that money aside and saying it's going to be over there for, you know, for example, in two years' time when you have to go back and take a look at it again. There's increased focus on communication across NPS. That work is going to continue. We started a, a team this year. That team is looking at the potential of doing a study, et cetera, and, and just getting the word out on NPS. And the last, we've already had lots of discussion on that. That's a reclassification. So I am going to go through this quickly because I think that Gail's covered so much ground in, in light of time. I will go through this as quickly as I can. And then, as I say, if I've missed anything, Judy and Tom can weigh in. So the next slide, please, Arlen. So this goes back to the trend, the NRSD enrollment trends. For us, one of the key things that we always tend to take a look at is the, the kind of bluish colors there and those, that's where we're looking to say, okay, who's not within NRSD right now that are in other schools? And it kind of goes back to the whole notion of recruitment. What do we have to do, et cetera? So that's something that we always take a look at and, and have discussions on every single year. But that gives you an idea from 2019 to 2024 of where we're at. To the next slide.
Wait, I have a question on that slide.
Oh, sure.
So I just want to make sure I understand the data. So, and I, I really have two questions. One is, so on the state's website, it says that the enrollment for 2025 total is 1192, right? So can we assume that that data that comes from their site for 2025, right, is the reduction from 2023? And then my question is, when, if ever, do we see the bump for the high school? Is it this year? Is it next year, once it's finished? When would we see that bump, right, that we are waiting to see?
We're waiting to see it too. I would, I would say still, I mean, we're still under construction. If you, if you've been over there recently, we're still under construction and we will be till at least the end of this school year. We were hoping to try to finish up around the month of May, June, somewhere around there. So we're hoping that we would see the bump back up in next year's numbers or the year after. So I think that's, I think that's the window of time that we are looking at right at this point in time.
So what, what's the capacity of the high school? Like what's the student enrollment number?
Don't remember off the top of my head. 900, 905? There you go. Thank you.
In the best case scenario, right, all these kids that are choicing out, the 170 kids, 200 kids are coming back, right? Or they're, the next generation are coming in. So there's 200 more kids, right?
In a perfect world.
How many kids are at the high school right now?
797. That ballpark. Okay. Next slide, please, Arlen. Staffing levels there on the, sorry?
I just want to, you know, having taught at that school for almost 50 years, you know, I think some of the things that stand out to me are clearly over the, over the course of history, I have seen the number of kids coming on school choice to Norset High School was very high. And they were very high primarily because of the programs that this school district offered to students that weren't available anywhere else.
That's correct.
And we would see little bumps in, and we would actually have to turn kids down from coming to the high school when they were trying to come to Norset because Chatham and Harwich were combining into Montemoy and they were building a new school and there was a lot of distress in those two communities. We're seeing kids from DY and Bonsable coming to Norset pretty consistently because of the programs that weren't being offered or just, you know, the overall atmosphere within the school for many parents was not a positive one. But we've lost those kids. And I think if, if you look at the, the notion that it was because of construction, that would really be an erroneous thought because if you look at the number of kids that are, that are choicing out to the charter schools and you look at the number of kids that, that are now going to Cape Cod Tech, it's because the programs that they have are programs that Norset doesn't offer anymore. And so, you know, I think that we need to look at, realistically, it's great when the new high school is finished and it's great when the campuses is completed and the construction stuff's out of there and everybody can get back to a normal school life. But I think that, you know, the mission will be to reconstitute the Norset brand that made it what it was 20 years ago. And that a brand-new building is not what makes Norset what it is. It's what goes on inside that building. And so I think we really need to start focusing on that again because the numbers here are not numbers that were generated by the building project.
And if I can say too, I would go back further. I think COVID too, because we had, that's when we had a lot of homeschooling and that kind of thing. It's not the, I would agree with you, Mark. It's not, it's not the project itself. But is it a component? I think it is a component. I would say though, I mean, we've had, like, I wouldn't call them recruitment, recruitment nights, but meet and greets, so to speak. And I think we had 90 this year, the other night at it. So that was, that was a good number for us. That was a relatively higher number for us the other night. So on the staffing levels, oh, sorry, Matt.
Jump in. I just want to follow up on what Mark was talking about, about what's being offered. And the word out, and I don't know if this is true or not, is that the art program for the seventh grade is, is being reduced or eliminated?
No.
Okay.
We heard the same. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. And it gives us a chance. I think they, I will tell you, there was discussion and we saw the Facebook pages and everything, just like you would see it, right? And, but were they looking at making some changes, some alter, some alternatives in that fact, in that program? Basically to better realign with what DESI's expectations are. That part is definitely true. But it wasn't a case of writing everything off.
I just want to add, as a parent of a 13-year-old who is making these trips right now and going on these tours, Norset still does offer the most diversity in types of programming, sort of regionally out here. So the program has still got pieces that other schools don't offer. So like that's still, I mean, maybe it ends up being a more regional approach in terms of what schools do what and they go back to that model. But like, there still is more there, right? And they certainly have the space potentially in the future to like reestablish something, so hopefully.
Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. So this is just a quick look at our staffing levels. NRMS, for the most part, the professional staff in terms of teachers, et cetera, has kind of held, held close to the same. But sometimes when you see the, the more orange-colored lines, the support staff is more linked and mirrors more of the needs of the children and who needs what and how many we need. And so in the last couple of years, we've been able to bring that particular line down. And then you can see over at the high school, the high school has cut. And when we say cut, it's really through natural attrition. It's just as, as folks retire, et cetera, we always sit back and say, is this a position that we need to backfill or not? And we take a look at the department that it's in. We take a look at the overall lens of the high school in terms of offerings. Because there are some things in, to, Kim, you didn't say this, but there are some programs and as Mark had alluded to, even though they're small programs, we still want to keep them. We still want to hang on to them. So all that kind of thinking goes into those discussions. To the next slide, Arlen. There's some staffing changes, just to give you an idea. You see that there's some additional staff for, for whatever the needs are that the principals have identified, but then you also see staff reductions that have been put forward as well. To the next slide. Certainly.
Just for clarification, do you have a .04 and a .05? Is that a, should that be a .4?
Oh, you know what? Let me go back and check. Yes, you're right.
Quarter of a person?
Yes, you're absolutely right. I'll go back and take a look at that. Yeah. Great catch.
Supposed to be a quarter and a half.
Yeah. Thank you. To the next slide. Thanks. There's just the budgets in a different, same information, but in a different format. And you'll, you'll take a look and you'll see this in an upcoming slide as well. You see that NRMS, the middle school, came in at a 2.02. NRHS came in at 3%. There's your region only. And that, I think, was actually a minus .58, Arlen. We need to add that minus on there. Although we've got the brackets. The central office, there's, you know, as I was talking to one of the TMs the other day and said, you know, you almost can't even look at the percentages this year because it's really just about the actual dollar figures. Because the central office budget, even though it's this high, when you take a look at it, it's, it's much smaller dollars. And I think that's it on this slide to, yes.
You said that the building construction's nearing completion. Do you expect the debt service to increase much beyond the 7.8 million that it's at now?
Right now, we, we are, we are projecting on time and on budget. I think that's your question.
No, I mean, will the seven point, you have more drawdowns on the, on the bond and?
We've got that spreadsheet with the breakdowns.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. There's the, just a, a quick bit of an update on the middle school profile. And there, over to the right-hand side is probably what you're more interested in. And that's how we arrived at the 2.02. To the high school slide, again, upper right-hand corner. I don't want to read through all of this. I know that you can read it at your own leisure. And there you see the increase, again, the dollar increase and the percentage at that 3.05. This particular sheet gives you kind of the broad stroke overview. We work from what we call the, the big sheet. We've figured a better name for it. And this kind of pulls in some of those salient points. Again, I know it goes without saying, but when we pull the region together, the region budget's just a little bit more complex than, than our single municipalities are, like the elementary schools.
You know, I think you see there, if I might, where the choice out, choice in
Right.
with a minus 464,000, where you used to look at a plus 2 million.
Oh, you're exactly right, Mark. Yeah. To the next slide. This gives you just, again, same information, just in a different breakdown. And you can see the, the various totals and the various percentages on the right side. And basically where it lands. There's nothing really new on that page that you haven't seen already before. Capital assets basically are, basically what they are every year, so there's no change in that either. And that's actually our big, that's the truncated version of the big worksheet that we work from. And that kind of gives you a broad stroke overview of absolutely everything in a truncated format. And then to the last slide, I think, that's it. And that's the slide, Kim, that you held up the, earlier. And if you can send me the very specific question, so I can go back after that tomorrow, I would really, really appreciate that.
This year and last year.
I'll take a look at last year's as well.
Probably just a formula error.
It could, yes, it could. You're right. It absolutely could just be the, the Excel sheet. So that's a broad stroke overview of where we sit at the high school. And you saw that region only with that minus number. And that, that's where it feeds into the elementary schools. And again, I say this is just the first step in the natural evolution as we continue to move forward and make appropriate and necessary shifts in our budgeting process. Any questions for Judy or Tom or myself? We really do try to go through this quickly, as quickly as we can.
I just, I am daunted by the work that you've done. And I know there's pain in the reclassification and, but I look at you guys and having taught in the school district a long time ago and reported to Gail Briere as one of my bosses, I just think that the volunteerism at this level of, of the stewardship is, the community doesn't have a clue. Thank you.
Can I spring from that too and just say, when we first came forward with the notion of the reclassification, it was not an easy decision, right? Because status quo is just so much easier. And it was actually Gail Briere, dare I say, share this, said, when do we rip off the Band-Aid, right? When do we go for the fix? But I think it takes a lot of courage for our, to your point, our volunteer leaders to go forward with this. And I know that Tom and Judy know this budget inside out in terms of the region. So just as Gail does with the elementary.
It's been around a long time. I'm happy to see that Band-Aid come off.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a couple of smaller ones. One is about a follow-up about charter school tuition. I know that Peter had reached out to try to see if anyone had reached out to the state to see if that number is a factual number or if it's an error. I did check the site today. That number that's listed is slightly different than the, the state's numbers. Same with on state transportation.
So actually Judith can certainly take the transportation and Tom will certainly take the charter school because he's been in touch with both DESI and MASC.
It looks like it came down about $50,000. So I'm guessing you did reach out and that's a real number.
Yes. I know more about charter schools now than I ever dreamed I would. And I still don't know a lot about them. But we took a deep dive on the financial piece. I had conversations with DESI and, and one of his most informative for me was our association, our representative from the Mass Association of School Committees. This response comes in two pieces because our year-over-year, because the way we do municipal budgets, we do our year-over-year based on our budget the previous year, not actuals. Now, the actual this year for our reimbursement was lowered. It went down $184,000 to $774,000. When I dug deep with, with both entities, what, what transpired, how, how it works, the charter schools are really complicated. They, they come up with
They, they come up with a cost number for each community, and each community is different. Our cost numbers, and I won't be exact, but for the middle school, our $27,000 a student and change, and the high, and the Sturgis, the high school, $35,000 and change. How they come to that determination, they, they have a, there's a random amount, or a significant amount of data that they request from us, and statistics about all of our costs and whatnot. They do the same thing with the charter schools. They take those numbers, meld them, and come up with a cost that they're going to charge us, that it costs us. So if our per-pupil cost in Nauset is $30,000 a student, and, and the charter's calculation comes up different, we pay that excess. It's about $35,000 more. The theory is, is that the student leaves the community and goes to the charter school, his money travels, the cost of education travels with us. That cost of education is determined by Desi. So they really aren't what our true costs are of education, they're what Desi has determined. For example, Province Town may have, I think Province Town, last I heard, was paying $45,000 a student to go to, to the charter schools.
Can I ask it in a, in a different way? Is the number that we use for charter school aid determined by a set number of students that we know are going to be enrolled, or is it a number that we calculate and use for the budget?
Can I, I can answer that, but the answer is two parts. We lost the money. What charter schools and Desi, primarily Desi, does a projection of what the student enrollment is going to be in the charter school. The charter school, then, once the enrollment figures are solid, usually at the end of the second quarter, they then make the determination, if your reimbursements are what they projected they should be, or if there's less students, you, they pull the money back from us. This year, we had six, the projection went out at 130 students. We lost six students. When I factored it in and discussed it, it appeared that we lost two Sturgis students and four Lighthouse. So that was the adjustment this year, which was 184,000, which took away from our budgeted number that we had of 963 to 774.
Which was a substantial increase.
Now, this year, I'm answering your question. I'm getting there. This year, they have what they, they call a transition reimbursement, and it's meant to soften the blow of the charter school tuition to the districts. So what they do is compensate 100% for the first-year student, 60% for the second year, and 40% for the third. Now, if a student goes all the way through the charter schools, seven years, we get reimbursement for three years, and for the next four, we pay full freight. So what happened then this year was that the reimbursements, the charter school reimbursements, the 100%, the 60%, and the 40%, were significantly lower this year. Over last year's, it was about a half a million dollars. Over last year's actual, that we experienced just recently, was about $300,000.
Okay, so last year's number of 963, based on a projected number, potentially, of students, it was almost, you know, almost double what it normally is. And then, so maybe this is a course correction, essentially, which is, maybe there was an overestimation, or maybe a bunch of students.
Not on our part. We take the numbers that Desi gives us.
Right, and then just, and then sort of a reduction in the funding amount, and this year makes the gap larger than it normally would have been, potentially.
Yeah. What we, what was I just going to say? Probably in hindsight, what we should do, when we get our original enrollment figures in October, we should probably take off of our projections what we see as in the charter schools, and if it's lower, anticipate that we may have to, we may be having a shortfall. Now, this year, they projected 124 students is where it ended last year.
Okay.
Everybody okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
You can ask it if you want.
Well, because I think Judy was going to answer the transportation question.
It's just a slightly different number as it rolls through the state's budget, so I assume you guys are watching it.
On transportation?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that there's ever been a year since I've been on the committee where we've actually gotten what they've said they were going to get. Sometimes it's, it's been significantly different. And this year, they, we got good numbers back, and so will that hold true next year? But I think when we go to budget, we...
I think it's already reduced, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So like, I don't want to...
So, but that's on the, that's on the revenue side of what we get back. It's based on last year's number. So, but the, the transportation expense number is going to now be level for the next five years, if I can be hopeful, three, anyway. And so there will be no increase in transportation, so hopefully, we can have a better judge of what we'll be getting in on that one. But that's... Anything else?
No.
Did that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? Nope, Alina, I don't know if you have, no? Hi, Nick, you got any questions?
I guess I do. One question that is a bit more general. We know that federal funding is iffy at best going forward. Do we have some sort of sensitivity analysis to see what, if any, parts of our budget would be hit? I mean, one area that comes to mind is school meals. I think I read that school meals are not going to be free for everybody anymore, you know?
So I'll answer that question, because we get asked this question at every meeting. We have no idea.
Shocking.
It's just as simple as that. Saying anything else would be misleading at best, so we don't know, but aware of it.
All in terms of federal dollars coming into the school district? My recollection is, we don't really get a whole lot, other than lunch programs.
Well, we get enough that we don't want to lose any.
All right, no, we don't want to lose it. But I think, you know, percentage-wise, in terms of the revenue that we would bring in, there's Title I money.
Title I, IDA.
IDA.
Those are the two big ones.
And agricultural, which is the school lunches. Is there anything beyond those three?
Those are the big ones. Those are the big ones. Yeah.
Well, at least, though, if you know how much it is, you know what the downside is, right? That's all I'm trying to say. You don't know what...
If we get none, yes, yes.
So Judy, to the next point, how much money do we get in terms of the, how much are we getting?
A million, two.
I think, yes, I think it's...
How much federal funds do we get?
A million, two, but that goes for all the schools, so that's not just...
So it's not a lot of money on the scale of things?
Yes, it's, it would be for all five districts.
Meaning if we had to pay for that, it's pennies on our tax dollar.
So Ed likes to keep his pennies.
I know he does.
You're probably right about that.
Right. And we want the 1.2 million, definitely. Okay. Anything else?
In terms of process, so if we go back tomorrow and recognize that some of these numbers are off, percentage-wise, right, and so the amounts to the individual towns will have to shift, and then potentially recognize that this transportation funding was 1.3, but now it's already down to 1.1, when does, when do you go back and revote a budget that has updated numbers in it? When is the opportunity to do that?
Well, we would have to go back, if this is for the region, we would have to do it at our next committee meeting, which is scheduled for the 27th of March. So we would have to do it then. But you'll have to get us the numbers, yeah. And I don't understand, though, the transportation is...
Well, the number on the state's website today for transportation is, it's not 131 anymore, it's 1121283, so it's come down about $100,000. So I just, I don't want to use the wrong sort of revenue number and have us be short already, if we can course correct right now, so...
Yeah, we can look into that.
Okay.
You all set? All right?
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, although some people find it enthralling.
Welcome.